Anything or just dive right in?
Do we, um, do we announce who we are or are there other people listening in?
Um, at the moment, I don't see anybody else who's dialed in, so I'm not even gonna set up the phone unless somebody calls in.
Okay.
Okay, and members of the public?
Um, I think everybody, does anybody not know who anybody is? We'll be happy to introduce ourselves. Okay.
Karen Keen, Ten Market Street, a butter.
Okay.
You know us.
You know us? Um, you recognize us from our photographs at the post office? Okay, um, so what's your pleasure?
Happy to, happy to jump right in.
Okay.
Eric.
Nope, excuse me. One of each of these as you go through. I'll just send you in if you wanna. Is that big? Yeah, that's fine. Let me grab another chair.
Do you all know my lovely wife Tina?
Yes.
Maybe none.
Hi, I just wanna make sure you all know who I am.
Um, in the past stated that Tina is not a supporter of this project, but here she is in the flesh and proving me once again wrong.
Well, yeah.
You don't know what she's gonna say.
True enough, that's always the case.
That's why I'm here, I wanna see what he's gonna say.
So, uh, let me see, so you remember where we were, um, a month ago? And this proposal is somewhat radically changed from the last one, uh, based upon feedback, uh, comment and criticism, uh, from the board, from the public, um, and from those listening in. So this is a simplified proposal that eliminates, uh, consideration of development to the south end of the property. Um, there were two units in the last proposal. Um, and I, I shouldn't, uh, say that withdrawing an application for those units was entirely because of criticism. A lot of it was, uh, a realization that I didn't really have all the information that you needed to have to make a, uh, an informed decision about it. Um, the requirement to have building plans and full dimensions for buildings that are, you know, who knows how far out in the future, um, is, you know, challenging. And you can waste a lot of time designing buildings that either may not get approved or may not be built. Um, that is not to say that I do not still have an intention of pursuing building on the south end there. I think it's eminently developable. I think it has, um, good drainage, good views, it's quiet there. Uh, let's see, it's, it's a very appealing site from a building perspective. Um, it, it, uh, has its challenges, but I think that if the board is serious about, let's see, envisioning senior housing in town, I think this lot is worthy of extra development, uh, beyond what is proposed here. And again, when I, in the fullness of time, develop those, um, ideas, I think, uh, I'll be back to the board with another application to consider future units. Um, in doing the septic design, which I think will be one of the topics, uh, tonight, I do have, um, a full application to present, uh, to David later to the, uh, New Hampshire DES. For a septic system, uh, the septic system that is designed, um, incorporates these five units, but it also incorporates future development. So, uh, it is built to a capacity to hold, um, three extra units that would be similar. Uh, these are senior housing units, uh, two bedrooms, two baths. Um, and that septic system is, uh, I was advised that it would make sense to consolidate the two. Um, it'll add additional capacity to the existing system and it makes sense to consolidate it in the one location and that frees up land use for the other areas. So, um, you know, I, uh, again, that is, uh, for future consideration. In, in this go around, we are once again considering units one and two, uh, and the barn, which are conversions of existing, uh, structures, um, and allowed, uh, as you will recall, under, and, and granted approval for, under the existing ordinances. Um, building to the second building, the new building, units three and four, uh, I believe would be considered part of the senior housing, uh, district and would, uh, any, uh, any approval would be granted under the senior housing, uh, ordinances. Um, let's see, a lot of things are coming into focus on this project for me. Um, I wish I could say I have all the answers tonight, but I don't. But I do think things are getting clarified. I've learned where the water lines are. Uh, I've learned where they will go. Uh, I've learned of other possibilities. Um, I, we have a, uh, hello there.
Hey.
Lori, nice to see you.
Hello, sorry I'm late.
Um, we know, uh,
Thank you.
We, we have an approved, excuse me, we have an ever, never source, um, approved underground feed to, uh, let's see, uh, transformer. And then, uh, from there to a distribution area next to the existing barn. Um, and I have since come up with a, an alternative to that. Um, but this would involve, uh, let's see, directional drilling under the road, um, rights of way from New Hampshire DOT, the select board and et cetera. But I think it's, it's technically feasible and I think it would be a more attractive approach. Um, I can't come here tonight and say that that's the route we're going. Uh, it's the route that I intend to go, but there probably will be obstacles in pursuing it. But that's, that's currently what I'm envisioning for, uh, an underground service. Um, I think you have seen the sketches that Jay Barrett did for the new building, three and four. Uh, caution you that those are not final in any way, they've been labeled study. They're, the footprint is exactly what it will be. I don't expect to vary that at all. The location is exactly where we would like it to be. The connection and links to the front building, uh, will be as they're drawn, although there's a lot of, you know, nuance to that as well. But the building itself, um, you see the floor plan, I think you have a copy of that. I don't expect the floor plan to change a lot, um, but perhaps in minor ways it will. And I, but I do think that the building itself might change. Uh, Jay has drawn a very imaginative and creative, uh, building that I'm not fully in love with yet. So, uh, we're, you know, we'll have to just see how it evolves. Uh, but I think his approach was to try to, excuse me, lower the impact of the vertical scale of the building by dropping the roof down and wide overhangs that protect the building. Um, and, you know, that, uh, like it or not, I don't know, that, that was his attempt anyway. But, um, that's what, that's what we're talking about. So, um, let's see. So I, I think the building itself could evolve and change. Uh, the location, the footprint, probably the height, all of those, uh, constraints are probably not gonna change. Uh, windows might change, but I'm pretty pleased with them, uh, so far. And, uh, we'll, we'll just have to see how it's developed as we, as we go through the design process. Um, let's see. You asked about a landscaping plan and I've put down on paper that, you know, we intend to keep all of the beautiful trees that are there and we've already gone to great lengths to, to limb them, to cable them and, uh, to protect them. Um, and I don't want anything to happen to them. The existing landscape is attractive, although it's a little labor intensive for me. So I think, you know, we won't, we won't make great efforts to, uh, revive a lot of that. And in fact, to create the parking, some of that will have to be torn up, uh, anyway. But I think we'll finish the construction and as people move in, I'm sure we will come up with creative ways to, uh, soften the impact of the building. And, uh, I think that's something I'd rather leave to the people who are there. But I think that in my mind, I can certainly envision, uh, community gardens and people moving in who take pride in their surroundings and wanna have a landscaped, uh, landscaped grounds. Um, let's see, I've rambled on, I think it, uh, I don't have too much more to say. Uh, but let me, let me answer your questions. Okay. So I, I have a concern, well, first, I, I really like the project. I'm, would love to see it come to fruition. I think there's a technical problem here with splitting it into a conversion and then a senior housing part, because the senior housing is allowed, and, and people correct me if I'm wrong, senior housing is allowed on a lot. And seventy percent of the gross floor area has to be for senior housing. So with the conversion kind of attempting to follow different rules with the square footage, I think you get over the, you're, you're not, you're, you're getting over the thirty percent of the gross floor area you'd be allowed for what would be considered non-senior housing, which I guess comes out of, you, you wanna have a bigger square footage.
Well, I think, uh, let's see, we were granted approval for five units before.
Under the conversion?
Yes, yes. And so two of those were removed. I didn't know that was changing the approval.
I don't, I don't know that it's changing the approval. I don't think that's the issue. And I think you would get approval for a conversion for three. Um, but if, you know, even if you had to redo that approval. But, um, the senior housing, it's like you, you're having two different uses on the lot. And senior housing is defined in the article is a single use allowed on the lot, but that allows for thirty percent of the gross floor area to be, um, non-senior housing, which, you know, you could do. Um, but with the square footage that you're showing, uh, I think that's not, I think that's gonna be over thirty percent. So, I mean, other members.
So you're saying because he's building a new building?
No.
No.
If you look at,
It's a senior, the senior housing article.
Senior housing. Oh, but the senior housing may share a lot or a building with other principal uses that are allowed in the line common zoning district. The gross floor area of the senior housing dwelling units, common areas and accessory buildings must exceed seventy percent of the sum of the senior housing gross floor area, non-senior housing residential floor area and non-residential gross floor area on the lot in order for the planning board to vary the dimensional controls as described in D.
So this is pushing him back to adding those other units in the back. If we had those, we didn't have that concern.
No, that, that's not necessarily so, because it's because these units, uh, average, you know, he's raising the average way up. So if, if all five units were averaged out to twelve hundred square feet, I think it would be fine.
No, but what I was saying is when he had these other units back here as senior housing, that balanced it because he had more senior housing, so it raised it up. As soon as you erase those, it flips the ratio the other way, so.
It's twelve forty-two now, right?
If you do, damn, if you don't, that's what's happening right here.
It's about twelve, uh, well, John, did David just say that, uh, that would apply if I was asking for, uh, let's see, uh, a reduction in the constraints in the, in the, and I'm not? I mean, this building, I don't think.
I think you're asking for, you're gonna be asking for a, um, increase in lot coverage when you add in all the driveways. I think I don't know the numbers.
Well, I don't think, uh, the lot coverage comes out at eight point three six percent. Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessarily the lot coverage because you removed so much from last time. I think it's, uh, it's D five and E one. And, and D five is the seventy percent thing of the gross floor area and, and E one is the gross floor area of senior housing dwelling.
But if he's not asking you to remove or to do, uh, vary the dimensional controls.
Yeah, that was my point.
Then, um,
Then D is irrelevant.
Then D is irrelevant.
So then it's just having a conversion.
But what about E?
E is still, there's still a, an issue with the square footage of the units being over the twelve hundred.
Yes, yeah.
So does he need to have senior housing to be able to build what he wants to build? Or could he just do as?
I don't see how, the only issue I would have is that you allow one primary use in one primary building on a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And so you would be adding a, uh, a second primary building.
So because the three and four are new building, they can't be conversion? So no more conversion with that, okay.
And what about under, um, land development? You have to have an office, but. Or is it, is it possible for you to average out twelve hundred square feet?
Well, the pre-existing units are considerably larger than twelve hundred, so I don't think so.
Are those already well underway, so?
But the twelve hundred, the twelve hundred applies to the senior housing volumes?
Yes.
Not the non-senior housing?
So.
No, but I'm saying, what, what he was saying is, uh, I think what, what John was saying is the one and two are pulling the average up. If they were smaller, it wouldn't be an issue.
Well, three and four are still twelve forty-two, isn't that smaller?
So.
And those are the only, three and four are the only two senior housing you're asking for, is that correct?
Yes.
So when the size, it sounds like the size of the new building is pretty much dictated by the size of the garage underneath, right?
Well, it is, yeah. I mean, twelve by twenty-four is sort of the standard for garage space and we're a little bit less than that, actually.
Right, so it'll be a little tight for cars if you make it small.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and also was just the time constraint. We spent a lot of time on the design of this building and then, um, you know, we'd have to go back and start over on it, on the design. Not to say that we couldn't, if you just said, no, it's gotta come in at twelve hundred square feet and less.
So let, let's, as, as a board, let's, uh, come to some sort of clarity about what we think in terms of this meeting, the, the Article thirteen criteria.
So I, I guess I wanna be clear on, so we're saying that units one and two, they're a conversion of an existing building? That is pretty straightforward.
No, because you can only have one use. The conversion would be a use and senior housing is a different use.
Okay.
So.
So is it one and two and five are converted? Yes, so we got three converts, three units.
So, I mean, how, how is it that the second building, the, the, the existing garage is, is a? If you read the, the, the conversion language,
Yeah.
Um, is it, if a, if a use is permitted in Table four one, then a conversion of all or part of a single building to that use may be allowed. So it is allowed into the multiple buildings.
It's gotta have had wiring and been there for five years and stuff like that?
Yeah, but the, uh, it, unless it's, um, well, structure's less than five years or it doesn't have the wiring, can be converted to a single family, which that,
Oh, I see.
Would be a single family.
So we have three conversions?
Right, we're not converting the three and four, not part of the conversion. Right, it's just one and two and five.
So Vicky, you're saying that conversion is a use and the senior housing is a use?
Well, I'm looking into the zoning industry.
Yeah, that's the way I would look at it, that you have, you know, you're adding a new building and, and that would be a multi-family building. And I don't see how, where that can be fit, other than through the senior housing. Um, there is, uh,
Right, senior housing allows, allows multiple uses.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So if there was some sort of like second story connector between, uh, four and three to one and two, um, that's no longer, that can't be a conversion, yeah, okay, so, all right.
So if we, if we talk about the, that we can, we can have different uses in senior housing.
Yep.
And he's not asking for dimensional control relief. So how does, how does D five apply or not apply? I mean, that, that's, that's where it says senior house, housing may share a lot or building with other principal uses that are allowed in the line common zoning district. So that's a clear statement that it can, you can have more than one principal use. The gross floor area of senior housing dwelling units, common areas and accessory buildings must exceed seventy percent of the sum of the senior housing. Well, it comes out to, to read seventy percent of, of the gross floor area. Um, in order for the planning board to vary dimensional controls. So if we're not varying dimensional controls, does, it doesn't apply at all? That's how I read it. D says dimensional controls such as blah blah blah. Maybe relax if the following are that. So the senior housing may share a lot or building with other principal uses that are allowed in the common, line common district though. That's like a standalone statement, that's not part of the relief.
Yep.
So we can rely on that as authority for, for multiple uses?
You can have a conversion and senior housing on one lot, is that, okay?
I believe, that's my, my read of it, yes.
So then, then we come to E, E one. So, or, so, so we've gotten past the hurdle of, of the multiple uses. Um, how to, if, if we're saying that we have multiple uses here and three of them are conversion, are we saying that, that those three units are governed by the, the, the rules of conversions and not by the senior housing article? In other words, we're saying, you know, senior housing dwelling units have to be, uh, average out to twelve hundred. Are we saying that, that these conversions don't have to average out to twelve hundred?
I would say that's,
I would agree, yes, that they don't.
Yeah, they're not senior housing.
They're not senior housing.
So they're not part of the senior housing?
Well, they're, I, I don't know. It's a little confusing to me.
Going back to the board's discussion on, when writing this, the board had talked about the ability of, if you needed to create other housing within a senior housing development, if you wanted to have a caretaker's, um, apartment.
Right.
And then you could build something, create something that was larger, that would not be governed under the senior housing, even though it's in the same building, it would not be governed under that. You could not use any of the, as long as all the rules of D applied, you could, you know, make the, the building larger, you could make that, you could, that extra unit could be larger because of D, the dimensional controls being waived, but.
Um, so we're interpreting this as D is just a tripwire, if you want.
The dimensional controls, yeah.
But we're saying that as a rule, uh, you can have, you can have more than one principal use?
That was always the intent of the, you know, you talked about being able to have services, businesses that provide services to the seniors, those are all things that were, uh, discussed at.
So, so is everybody agreeable to that?
I think it's consistent with everything we're talking about.
All right.
I'm happy with it.
You, sir, are past that hurdle. Anyway, thank you. I, I think we need, we need to be clear about that.
Let me just check my heart rate, I'm sorry.
Don't joke about that, please, please.
I was asked before you came in the room, John, so just going back to that.
It's funny, because of course, we just wrote these rules, we haven't applied them yet. And now immediately we have.
I submit it's not all that funny, actually.
No, no, I mean, it's a good test for one. Uh, but it also, it's a, but it's a test both, both in the wording and then it's a test in terms of our intent, intendeds. Fortunately, the people who wrote the wording and the intent are the same people and they're all sitting around this table. If it had been done ten years ago, we'd be guessing a little bit.
It's, it's also important for us to be clear about the logic behind our decisions. So we're, we're all on board about that view.
So let me ask a question and I appreciate that and I share your struggles, I guess, in, in trying to, uh, see, see the right path forward. So in the future, if I come in with an application for additional development to the south here and I'm constrained to twelve hundred square feet per unit, um, and I have the septic capacity for three units and that's thirty-six hundred square feet, how will I ever, if the front buildings are included at that point? Or would they always be excluded from senior housing?
No, you wanna keep them as a conversion.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's regardless of future senior housing.
Well, what I'm wondering though is if you, if you later come in and ask for changes in dimensional controls, does that trigger it?
Exactly, yeah, which I would need those in order to do any future development.
It would, I think it would matter by,
That's seventy percent.
Seventy percent.
Right, it would, it would, the seventy cent, in my view, the seventy percent would then kick in. But you're adding new units that are senior housing, so you're gonna, you're, you're gonna probably not have that be binding. But you might have the twelve hundred average be a challenge, which means those units may have to be smaller to make it average out to twelve hundred. That's why I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, but that's how I would.
Since, since the three and four are already slightly over twelve hundred.
Right.
But I think that's still an issue that hasn't been resolved yet.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, it's not, but I think what David was saying was that, or somebody here was saying, and maybe it was you, but maybe, too many, too many, but, but once that D kicks in, where you're wanting dimensional control, I'm, let me phrase this as a question. When D kicks in, does that then suck in the conversion to, uh, to the seventy percent? That stays permanently out because?
It's not part of senior housing, but it would be part of the sum of the non-senior housing.
Which would be the seventy percent?
Yes.
Well, but it's, yeah, but it's, that's not senior housing.
Right.
No, but it would be, right.
Right, so he's, he needs to get, that's thirty percent.
So it would kick in the seventy percent, but, but it would not be part of the calculation of the average? So it would kick in the seventy percent, but, but it would not be part of the calculation of the average senior housing.
Size.
Size, okay.
Right, yes.
Just a, okay, Karen, you want to say something?
I apologize if this is redundant, but I just, I don't know a whole lot. I remember at the last meeting, the map showed something in the order of twenty thousand square feet with all the driveways and everything that needed to be included. And that far exceeded the twelve thousand that was to be allowed for the lot. Am I, am I understanding that there's something about twelve thousand feet that wouldn't have been allowed?
Was that for the total lot coverage?
Right, the total lot coverage. So if there, you know, when there's future development to this question, will the conversion parts as well as the senior parts be included to come up with that number? And I would, I would think it would, I don't know.
Okay, so, yeah.
And that's the question that I wondered.
The lot coverage, that's, that's a good question, I don't know, never did this before.
Well, it's all part of lot coverage.
Yeah, that, I would include everything, all the buildings as, and driveways.
Yeah, because at that, at that point, especially with D kicking in, that becomes part of, you know, more sort of a, a part of the having to fulfill the seventy percent thing and that slot coverage, that's what it would seem like to me.
I, I guess that, as I understand the seventy percent part, it still is the fact that it's twelve thousand square feet is what's allowed and twenty thousand square feet is what was proposed in the last order.
But I should add that once somebody asks for relief for senior housing article, through the senior housing article, it says dimensional controls such as lot coverage, building footprint, gross floor area and property boundary and road setbacks may be relaxed by the planning of board, by the planning board. So it would depend on, on the, I guess, on the context about whether or not, how, how constricting that would be, I guess, is the way to put it.
What is allowable for lot coverage?
I can't say off the top of my head. Maximum building footprint shall not exceed eight thousand square feet and maximum gross floor area of all buildings and accessory structures shall not exceed twelve thousand.
But that's for, that's for senior housing.
That's for senior housing, lot, lot coverage, I think.
So Karen is correct, the last application was for fifteen percent lot coverage.
Right now, you're at eight, you're, you're eight point three six.
Yeah, the maximum lot coverage in the uncommon district is twelve percent.
Twelve percent, okay.
So you'd have another, you know, three and two thirds.
Yeah.
So going to fifteen is not the biggest stretch, is? Is that what you're, is that what, I don't want to put those in your mouth, but.
No, I was just trying to get my head around it. I think in a, in a new plan, I think for the southern development, unit six would go away and six, seven, and another might be consolidated. So the footprint might actually go down.
And move.
Or lot coverage, excuse me.
And move northward, is that what you're saying?
No, no, I think it would still be on the southern end, still be in your view, shit.
And again, if you're, we, we, we can't say that these numbers are, are set because if the applicant asks for relief through D, it's up to the board at that point, if the board has discretion to, to offer relief. Well, for, as, you know, dimensional controls such as lot coverage, building footprint, gross floor area and property boundary setbacks. And it says such as, so it's basically, you know, five one.
But to get such relief, it has to be seventy thirty, which is.
Would have to be seventy thirty.
Which is your, your challenge today, but if you add the other units done it, those likely will flip the ratio in your favor.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say that E three does say the maximum building footprint shall not exceed eight thousand square, the maximum gross floor area, all buildings and accessory structures on, on the lot shall not exceed twelve thousand. So that would be, that twelve thousand is a hard number.
That's a hard, a hard number.
But that doesn't mean that the driveways, I think that's one of the reasons that you wanted the flexibility, is to be able to say, okay, the driveways are going to take up lot coverage so we can be flexible to allow adequate driveway space.
Yeah, I mean, I think that this, this was an effort to get senior housing, this article. The town voted overwhelmingly for it and there are provisions in here to help us accommodate it, but they're not guarantees.
Right, I understand. And I, I think, and again, I don't even have a design for future development, but I think the prior application was eleven thousand three hundred. So it came in under the twelve thousand and I think a future development might have more units, but slightly smaller units and less, less footprint and therefore less lot coverage.
The total average would then be less than twelve hundred.
Well, that's, that's the objective, yeah.
I'm curious, getting back to twelve hundred, for units three and four, you have twelve, two, four, two for each one?
Yes.
And on, in, E four, up to three thousand square feet of covered parking dedicated solely to senior housing, should not be counted as part of gross floor area? Do you have the floor, the parking for those units taken out?
I believe it is, yeah.
Yeah, so for those units.
Well, parking's would be underneath, so each of the units that are, could be stacked on top of that.
So those, those.
Right, I understand, but I didn't know if the three, if the, if the, if the parking was included, the twelve, two, four, two or not.
Yeah, in, in the prior application, I think we approached, I think we actually went over, there was a question about whether we were exceeding it or, or taking an increase allowance. And I, I did the tally on it, and I think we actually did come slightly over three thousand.
All right, so I don't, but I don't see that taken out anywhere in this new table that you've given us today.
Let me see here.
Am I correct that the, that the, the footprint of that slab is five thirty-nine, is that what that says? Or is that elevation?
Where, you see? No, that's, that's elevation. So the footprint of that slab is thirty-two by forty-six.
Okay.
Correct. Which is fourteen seventy, no.
Is that fourteen seventy-two? Or twelve seventy, twelve forty-two?
Okay, yes, that's the.
Twelve forty-two is the gross square footage of the units. Fourteen seventy-two, I think, is the footprint of the, of the building.
Of the, right.
Okay, so again, to the, to the board, I guess we should have made the average twelve fifty, but, but, but we, I don't see that we are allowed to accommodate under twelve forty-two.
That would be zoning board.
From site plan review, does that go to the zoning board?
Go be then.
We'd need a variance.
Yeah, we'd need a variance.
Yeah, yeah, this isn't a zoning.
That's, I, I mean, unfortunately, we weren't, we never thought of the option of having a four car garage underneath and what the dimensions of that would be and that that would come out to twelve forty, or, yeah.
Is there any way to?
I just don't know if there's any way to make those smaller.
Is there any way to put a, make a common area a little bit bigger, each of the units a little bit smaller? Because you don't count the common area?
Well, again, we're messing with the design, so yeah, anything is possible, yeah.
Because eighty-four square feet is not very much.
I, I could have said they were nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine square feet and you guys probably wouldn't check the interior dimensional spaces. But I think.
Let's do that.
You know, I, I argue, as I have mentioned to you before, that I think the square footage is arbitrary. I, I think twelve hundred sounds like a reasonable number. But I think Jay Barrett said in one of the design revisions, well, we don't want to have section eight housing here. This is not, we're not going to do that in line. And, you know, I agree.
What is, what is section eight housing?
Let's call it affordable housing or rent controlled, or, I don't know, it's, probably, I think it's actually a Vermont term.
No, it's not, it's in the federal term, but the reason why we limited it to twelve hundred is that we weren't getting McMansions in the senior housing market, we don't need that, there's plenty of that. So we wanted smaller units.
Yeah, and, and there was going to be, it's somewhat arbitrary because we were going to pick a number.
Yes.
And that's, obviously, it would have been better for you if it was twelve fifty.
Yeah.
But regardless, right now, this is the reality of, of the, of the law. So it has to be dealt with.
Yeah, I mean, we're clearly trying, we were clearly trying not to create a disincentive for senior housing. I mean, that was, we're trying to create a disincentive.
Yes.
But the other thing we were trying to protect against was senior housing where somebody would try to use the senior housing benefits and then slap on a whole bunch of other things that are not senior housing. And, you know, they get all the benefits, but then they, then they throw in a McMansion or something as their, their size. So we, we, we're clearly trying to avoid that. I don't think you're trying to do either of those, but we, obviously, we bumped up against our own wording.
I mean, really, the, the, at this point, it's not going to make any difference. I mean, we went through a very long process coming up with that number with an awful lot of input, including from someone who's an experienced builder. So that's the number we, we ended up with. And I, I don't think we can, I don't see that we, as a board, have the authority to modify that.
Well, let me suggest that you, I think, do have authority to grant conditional approval. You might grant conditional approval based upon a survey, which I don't have. You might grant conditional approval based upon homeowners association documents, which you don't have, or a septic design, which you don't have, or.
But what would the conditional approval be for relating to the twelve hundred?
That I go back to the ZBA for approval for a footprint that exceeds the allowable.
Oh, that you get a variance?
Yeah, it would allow me to proceed for construction. It's not easy to build in this environment. So, and I think, you know, I'm going to get laughed at in town when the price of these units comes in at whatever the number is, but it won't be affordable housing.
Well.
It will be nice.
I, I think whatever chance.
That's not, that's not your burden, I understand.
It's not our burden, but whatever chance that things were going to be at least relatively approachable in price has been blown out the window in the past year.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but this was written at another time.
Yeah.
So how does the board feel about, about that, that condition?
I would rather just continue till we got it because it's basically approving something that's not zoning compliant. And so we can just keep it open and continue till after you get that, that taken care of. But I did have another kind of related question, and you've already received approval for two additional units with their setbacks and all that. So is it, how long is that valid for? And, because I didn't want.
Two years.
Two years, okay.
That was my understanding, Dave.
The previous zoning approval.
The previous zoning, I want to say it was two years and that's what the state law says.
Right. So are you going to lose that anyway to, I mean, you're, you're not, you wouldn't be coming back for six and seven?
Basically, as long as there's been movement on the project, then you don't lose the approval. And so go by, you know, I, I truly believe there has been movement on the project. So, you know, it's not that you haven't started it, it's only if, for projects really that haven't been started, then you, you lose the approval and have to go back.
Right, so how long would you extend that for? I just, you know, I, before you would have to come back to get approval for six and seven from the zoning board, you know, that's the.
The zoning board, if they, if you got approval for six and, or.
Which you did.
Yeah, or, no, I say, or if you get zoning board approval, that's good for, also good for two years unless you haven't started. So that's.
Well, aren't you confusing the numbers? I think six and seven were never granted approval.
Oh, I thought you'd gotten approval from the zoning board.
Oh, excuse me, from the ZBA, right?
Yeah, ZBA, yeah, 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 not from us, but from the zoning board.
Conservation Commission and the ZBA.
Yeah, right, 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 yeah. And so I was just wondering like how much we want to preserve that and, because if that's still holding and if David says, oh, you're working toward it with this plan, then you wouldn't have to go back. But I wondered if then you got a variance, has that changed that previous approval? Because he's getting a variance for something.
I don't believe so because it's, it's not going to affect the, the previous approval. It has no bearing on the, the previous approval.
Okay, good, because I was kind of interested in trying to keep that alive so he's not going back to the zoning board again, okay.
If I, if I were zoning board and I'm giving them the variance, I would say, I would perhaps think about conditioning that on the fact that when you do six and seven, that they're small enough so that it averages out to the twelve hundred. And then.
Oh, then also go back to where we were. Because this board would also be looking.
We would, we would be able to.
Yeah, okay, okay, just wanted to bring that wrinkle in, okay.
We, we're, we're going to continue the, continue this.
There's a lot more to talk about.
Right, but do, do we want to do a checklist tonight? So that, so that Ray.
I think you've gone through pretty much.
He pretty much has it. All right, so Karen?
Yeah, I just have a little question.
One of my overall questions about the project and with this is just one through five, there's fourteen parking spaces approved, and we need four underneath three and four in order to make it a good business deal. And I, you know, I think, I think about what seniors do if they're making this kind of decision to move, you know, to downsize and get rid of a lot of stuff. And the lifestyle changes and you perhaps don't need two cars everywhere.
I'm just looking at your situation, you're a good neighbor. So, I, I, yeah, so I don't know.
Well, I, I think one of the, one of the things about having the, are you talking about whether you need to have those four underneath covered?
And that might.
For seniors in particular, I think having cars that are, you know, they don't have to shovel out every time they, they, they go out in winter is a, is a good thing.
For any time.
Right, yes.
Well, yes, that's true, but if you look for units one and two, they will have to shovel out.
Right.
Then they have outdoor parking, so.
Right.
I, I don't know if that's part of your, you know, your purview, whatever.
No, we had a lot of discussion about this and we, we also, at one point, we were going to require covered parking. But we, we had some input and decided that we would not make it mandatory.
Okay, well, I don't know if this is for you to consider or, or for Ray to continue, but under three and four, parking for four cars, two of those could be for units one and two and two could be for three and four, and the overflow would be outside.
That's, that would be for, for Ray, although we could, I guess.
That was, that is the plan.
Figure it out.
Yes.
If I were you, I'd want it underground, I mean, covered parking, I've got it now, I love it. Can I just ask some other questions?
What if I said no?
I want to stand up and object. I think it's, I think I've got it, I think I've figured it out, but I want to make sure I'm understanding this right. So when you're talking about the twelve hundred square feet per unit for units three and four, and they're, they're now at twelve forty-two.
Right.
So this little balcony.
Unenclosed porches do not count.
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure, so where it says lot coverage, walkways, panios and decks is up to thirteen, but that's.
That's not part of the.
It's not part of the lot coverage, okay. So taking that off doesn't help.
No, that's not part of the gross floor area of, of, of the, of the units, is that what you're talking about?
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure I was right, okay.
Mayor, Mayor's pardon me. Well, I guess the first thing I'd say is one and two aren't senior housing, so.
Well, I guess the first thing I'd say is one and two aren't senior housing, so debate, if we're saying seniors want covered parking and one and two are teenagers shoveling everything, then that's all good. And the other point would be back to the 3,000 square foot covered parking allowance. If, if two of those parking places under three and four are for units one and two, then they can't be taken out, correct?
Yep.
So, you know, I guess now I don't know what number we're looking at with the 1242, right? If you have all of that parking space taken out and two of those parking places are actually for one and two, then we need to put some back in.
Perhaps you're right. Perhaps you're right. I mean, they are intended to be for one and two, no question.
Well, that needs to get sorted because that does affect the 1242.
Well, on the other hand, it might be in your interest not to, not to...
Investigate that.
Yeah, not to do that.
Haven't figured that out yet, Eric. Sorry.
I'm doing the accounting, trying to do the accounting in my head right now.
That's a good point.
But then they're not, well, then they're not part of the senior housing.
Yeah, I get it.
Can you have, can you have half of that garage and be not senior housing?
Then it wouldn't be considered not part of the senior housing, or it would be considered part of the gross floor area forage.
Ray, can we do that? I would, I would think it'd be in your interest to have all four of those cars officially attributed to senior housing.
I should seriously consider that.
You should consider that.
Yeah.
Okay, more questions? Vicki?
Yeah. So I was wondering for three and four, if I'm coming in from the common, how do I get in, into my building? There's no walkway from the eastern, eastern parking lot, and so there's no walkway to get into my building.
Well, there, there is actually, Vicki. There's, Jim has it a little bit in the wrong location. The ramp where he's calling a walkway with unit pavers, that's, that's a, next to the parking.
Yep.
So that's a ramped entrance to one and two.
Yep.
And then there will be a terrace all the way across there. So it's not, it's not covered, but it is...
A cross here.
Yes. Yeah, there is a terrace connecting the two buildings there.
So is that hardscape that's not shown?
I don't think so. It shows on mine. It's the...
Oh, I see the terrace connecting. So they're going to, so if I live in unit three and I'm coming from the country store and I walk down here, I'll go up the ramp, and then I walk through two to get to, and then across?
Yes, and or, the grade, the grade is, you can see, I think, on the plan. It's pretty much...
I'm just talking about getting my feet muddy and that there's, there's no, I see the terrace connecting two and three, but how do I get from the driveway over especially...
I think, I think the, gosh, I'm reluctant to draw on these beautiful plans.
I know. No, you have to. This is just a draw.
The, I think the, if you walk over there now, you'll see that the, the ramp will connect to the southern end of the porch area. And you will step down from there onto a terrace that is slightly bigger than Jim has drawn. So it was, I don't know if you can see that.
So it would go all the way to the corner of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you would walk onto, onto the, walker would walk onto this side, not my side?
Yeah. I don't think you'd get your feet wet. I know how versed you are to that.
Well, no, I'm just, you know, okay, so, I mean, there's no walkway to the exterior entrance of my unit three and four. I mean, that's what I'm...
Yes, there would be, a walkway.
Okay, there is a walkway.
Yeah.
But it's not shown.
It is not shown.
Okay, so that, so that walkway should be shown. Or if I have my guest parking, you know, out here, how does that person, you know, come to my unit? And if they're coming from on the common, they park, yeah. So, so that's just one question that I would like to have shown on here.
Yep.
And then are these required accessible spaces? Or are they, like, for this size development, do you need to have two accessible spaces?
I don't believe we're actually required to have any under, under existing codes. I think those are, if you will, a residual, a vestigial, I guess, isn't that the word? Remnant of the beginning plans where we had four units.
So you're not going to have any assigned spaces?
I don't think we need any designated handicapped parking.
Okay, so they would be taken off, right?
It's a good point, yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so you work with this all the time and this is all new to me. So, that's why I'm just asking. Because I didn't know if you needed them or not. And then, you know, possibly you would need it in the garage if...
That's all senior housing.
Right, right. And, and, and then, yeah. So, so I, I don't know. You just, I wouldn't sign the ones on the, you know, the surface parking for handicapped if you don't mean it?
I kind of agree with you because I think we need visitor parking at that level.
Yeah, yeah, they're not used, okay. All right. So, and then I didn't compare this plan, because I just had it on my little screen, with, are all the dimensions of the driveway and stuff still okay? Is it kind of the same except that you didn't have the driveway down to six and seven? So we could say that the fire chief is still happy with this driveway and how he's going to get in and out of the site?
He, I don't, yes, I think Mike, you probably didn't see it, but he shared a picture of his largest piece of equipment...
I saw it.
Between the trees.
They went down the day after you met here or two days later?
No, I, I remember that. But so he can still get in and out of this without the long, because we talked about turnaround at the bottom of the driveway.
Yeah, I think this, this is, I think, what they would call a hammerhead turn here, three-point turn.
Okay, yeah. But he's happy with this. I mean, maybe you need to extend the hammerhead a little bit longer. I don't know. But I would want you to double check just to be sure that he's good with this version. And, you know, if you were to extend it, it's not, you know, by hardening the surface and that hammerhead a little bit, it's just becomes part of your driveway later. So if you could run it by him, make sure he's happy with it, I would feel more comfortable about approving it. And obviously, the septic is Is it possible, I know that there's a note here saying that all of this is refer to final design plans and applicable code requirements for final grading layout and specifications. So what we would be actually looking for is as built to show the underground electric and where the water lines really run and all that. And so are you comfortable with providing that to us as as built?
Yeah.
I don't really care so much. I mean, I don't know if you're really going to ever have final plans.
At this rate?
I'm sorry, you know, but, but that's, that's a reality. So what I'm saying is, what we would really like to have is a, no, is a as built, so that we know where not to dig in the future or in 50 years. The people here know where not to dig because they know where their stuff is, you know. So it's shown as an as built.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that makes me okay. The other thing about this plan is that it talks about controlled invasive plants. And you really aren't going to do that. I mean, you would like the owners to do that, right?
Well, I think, as I understand it, that's an ongoing battle. It doesn't, it's not a one and done. So I guess yes would be...
So I would cross out that first thing, control invasive plants, and just start that whole little box with prune and encourage native plants. And, and hopefully, everybody's motivated to control. But, you know, that puts it really on you to control, or at least to start that. And I don't think you really want to do that. I mean, maybe you do, but, but I don't want David to have to go and...
Wasn't one of the variances I was expecting tonight, but thank you.
No, I think it's a great idea and I think you should do it. But I don't see how, well, and especially because part of it's on Lori's property, that it should be...
Yes.
Put there.
And Lori is planting the invasive species as Ray is taking it out.
Maybe not me, but... Right. So if you just took that out, and I don't think it should actually point to Lori's property.
It's not weed you can take out from bags here and put on your property. Glad to get rid of that out here.
We have lots of not weeds. Listen to that one.
I wanted to make sure that the, since the barn is a non-conforming structure, is it okay to put more intense use in there?
Say that again?
I didn't see any reason not to.
Okay, okay.
I could, I went through and...
Right, okay.
That was never anything I...
It's a change of use. Say that again, Vicki. Okay, so the barn, you know, change of use from a barn to a living space. And in some towns, that wouldn't necessarily be permitted. In this town, the zoning administrator has said that that's fine. So I just want to be sure that we haven't overlooked that. So, Ray, I wondered if your elevators...
Could you give me a paraphrase of that last?
The last one is barn is a non-conforming structure because it's very close to the property line.
Yes.
And I wanted to be sure with an intensification of the use that that would be permitted in our zoning ordinance because some zoning ordinances don't, wouldn't allow that without some kind of trip to the zoning board. So, but if that's...
Yeah, I found, I know nothing in the ordinance that would prevent that.
You're the expert. I just want to be sure that we haven't overlooked that. So I wondered, and this is to your 1242 question, elevator shafts would be common space in your units three and four.
And the stairway as well.
And so you counted the elevator shafts as common space?
Yeah.
Okay, so there are, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Nice try.
Yeah, okay. So on your driveway to the east, I'm not seeing any snow storage areas. And I think that that should be called out just so that the residents understand that if they plant anything there, it shouldn't be a woody shrub, but it would just be, you know, annuals or something that, you know, dies back and then will come back after the snow's gone. So, and just so they, they don't start planting all crazy. Okay.
Yeah.
Um...
Incidentally, let me just address the survey. So the fieldwork has been done. I don't have a finished survey yet, but the fieldwork has been done and they relayed to me that there are no inconsistencies so far that they've come across in the area under development.
Positive. I'm a little concerned about the single car coming, you know, the visitor coming to the, into the old barn and where they're going to have to back up on the street unless there's somebody not parked in the four little lots there. So I wondered if there is some way to enable them to turn around without having to back into the street? And if the answer is no, because we'd be killing the maple, I guess backing onto the street is...
Well, Lori does it every day, so I don't...
That's true.
You know, I think there are a lot of hazards around the common. I'm not sure, you know, there, there's a dumpster that gets removed 12 times so far and a lot of trucks in there every day.
Okay, just yes.
And so far, we have yet to take anybody out.
I know FedEx would probably come in and, you know, do delivery, back in, and the UPS guy would do that too.
Park on the street.
Okay, and then you've...
Park all over. Yeah, so I don't think I have an answer to that one.
Okay. I didn't know if there was a way just to...
Reserve a space for backing into?
No, well, it just, it probably doesn't even need to be a whole space. I mean, you don't need a whole space, but just a little bit of paved surface that if somebody wanted to back up, that it, you know, they, they could do that without going out in the street. But I, I, I just leave that there. So I'm wondering now that you're using this shared septic for everybody, are there, so unit six and seven would have to pump to that reach field?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, yeah, that, that's the current plan. And it would be pumping.
Okay. And then I'm a little bit, like, I want to be more clear about, I understand you really want to do directional boring and do underground power, but I want this board to not leave that as an ambiguity and that I think we should take action on the overhead scenario and count it, and if that's okay, then count it as a bonus if it goes underneath? Because if our expectation is really that it's coming underneath, I just want to be clear about that. Because in other cases, it may well be that we have a requirement that it be underground.
I, I agree with you, Vicki, and that's why we didn't change the drawing.
Okay, all right. I just want to be clear that that's what we're talking about.
It's a hypothetical at this point.
Is overhead service and it might in fact...
So, so as it's, what you're saying is that as it stands now, it's overhead.
Right.
But it might be...
And that we would be happy if it went underground?
Everybody would...
Okay, so everyone would be happy if it goes underground, so that's a reliable thing. But I just wanted that to, to be shown there. And then the other is, in terms of just keeping Ray's options open for what has been approved for unit six and seven, I kind of feel like that in a way needs to be shown as a future development area so that if all the residents get really hyped about their community garden right across the road, that they are not going to be severely upset when it's time to put in unit six and seven. So if that, and that's really the homeowners association documents and protecting you for, you know, reserve that right.
I like that. You know, I think it's, it's, the design is obviously still evolving.
Yes.
I was advised by an attorney friend to get all the approvals now so that a future homeowner doesn't sue me to prevent future units being put in there.
Right.
So I, I think that's a good suggestion.
So even if, it, it's just like dotted in?
Yeah.
And then you're, the plan you filed for the homeowner, for the homeowners association shows that...
And Jim Kennedy, to his credit, was advocating doing the whole thing right now.
Yeah.
And I thought this would be easier for the board and easier on me. But guess what? Wrong again.
Well, no, it's, it's preserving your right that you already have with the zoning boards. You don't have to go back there.
Yeah.
And then making it so, because I don't know who's going to decide. Well, say for example, you know, I don't know if you're going to retain that and that you're going to have six shares in this, and then you would retain those other two. And then what if they vote you down in terms of building it?
Yeah, sure. That's a possibility.
I mean, if I was one of them, I might want to do that. Because I might not want to have backdoor neighbors or anybody else. It's the perfect way it is. And so just, that's up to you though to, and I, I'm an advocate actually for having more, not fewer here.
Remember you mentioning that.
So I, yeah, all right. And that is all I had to say about this plan.
Well, I'd like to thank my esteemed colleague from the state of Long. Thank you. Those were great questions. Are there any other questions? The, the lady in the, in the back there.
In the corner. I remember there was some conversation at the last meeting about the possibility of subdivision. I really don't know what that means or what that entails or whether it's still an issue.
Does, does anybody remember the context of the...
Yeah, condos, condos need to be subdivided.
Oh, the condo subdivision, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, condos specifically have, it's, it's a kind of a formality, but there has to be a subdivision for the, for the condominium units or condominium buildings. I forget which.
So that's part of the plan someplace?
Well, it's, it's a requirement.
Subdivision is creating individual spaces. So it's sort of oftentimes you might own to your drip line or something like that. And the rest of the land outside of that is common space. Rich did it.
Yeah, right. I mean, because when you buy a condo, you want a deed that tells you exactly what it is you own.
Okay.
And so...
That's going to happen and it was just something that stuck in my head.
Yeah. And we can't, we can't require it now because it's his ownership decision as he builds these, whether they become condos or not, still.
And the board doesn't have a whole lot of discretion of not approving condominiums.
Yeah, condominiums, subdivisions are...
Says you have to approve this.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So everybody, when the subdivision does come forward, you will be invited to come to the meeting again.
But it's not a, that there will be now, what normally, bunches of different properties bunches of different properties back here. It's still, most likely, would be one lot and the subdivision would be four of the building spaces.
Yep, six and seven, thank you.
It's basically a lower area in the ground that the water flows to and then spreads out.
Where you go pee when you're going outside.
Gotta, gotta retain that bio.
No, it, it, because it treats the stormwater so that there's infiltration and then there'll be plantings that will also help filter water and any of the nutrients or salts or sediment that comes off.
No, I was chasing bears and a ball chair and hill and Hannah were, I found one of those. It was a cesspool.
It's the opposite of a storm drain. Storm drain, you're trying to get it off your property as fast as you can. Bio retention, you want to keep it on your property as long as you can.
Let it spread out anyways. Any other questions?
Level spreader, is that, isn't that a type of?
That's just mainly, this is actually has a, the bio part means that there's vegetation that's, you know, really working for you to do the quality, water quality improvement.
Any other questions?
This is more of a comment and again, I don't, this probably doesn't, isn't really appropriate here for your.
So you're going to tell us something appropriate?
Yeah, well, I meant, I don't think that you can specify this.
Yeah.
But I just want to make the comment publicly. So, thank you very much, I think this new plan is, is great. The only thing I'm still slightly wary about is the, the walking path down to, you know, the.
Right, big rock.
Big rock, thank you. And I, I mean, I know that the property lines here are tight. You know, if there's any way of either not putting on this plan or, I mean, I would be so much happier if it went on the other side of the building. And Northern Woodlands, there's nobody here tonight representing them, but they are very supportive of it. Not that I'm not supportive of that, it's just that it's right outside our bedroom window. And the people, we know, people are going to walk down that driveway to get to the, if you can't, if you see, the driveway on the, our side, the west side of the building. They're going to walk down that at all hours of the day and night, you know, to connect. I just wish the connecting was on the other side of the building. And I'll just say again what I said before, we're a private home. We probably always will be. Northern Woodlands right now, they're not there. You know, they're in office. They're not there on the weekends, they're not there sleeping, trying to sleep on Sunday morning at, you know, seven, eight o'clock. So, I know, I know that that's a private property and you can't specify that. But if possible, maybe just to not have it on this plan.
I think I'd like to remove it.
There you go. Thank you, I did say something.
Well.
Because that's the only thing that would bother me.
I, I saw it as something that was done in conjunction with Northern Woodlands and our, our good neighbors to the, to the west. But I could see, and it was intended for the residents here and not for the general public. But, as we all know in these days, everything is becoming public, so.
Well, as I said to you before, people walk down the driveway now because they don't consider it. For some reason, they see construction and think it's public land and they're going down there with their dogs and, yeah, you're going to have to.
The problem is, if you move a culture to these units, then the people who live in the, in these units have the same problem you do.
Well, that's very true, well, I'm thinking Northern Woodlands.
People have to cut through to get there and they're walking right out their bedroom window.
That's a good point. But I just meant on Northern Woodlands, just not having it on this plan so it could eventually be down the Northern Woodlands driveway now.
I think it'll go away.
Thank you very much.
Maybe it'll reappear another time or that's where people will walk anyways. Yeah.
Well, that's true, they're going to walk in anyway, you're right. But not if there's, there's no connection.
No.
This says, this little sign says it's a private driveway.
If you're ready, if it's, if it's an officially less walkway on account to the plan, but then it has a different status than some of the.
It's the muller that's going to attract, mark, will attract it.
Right.
Well, that seems, that issue seems to have been addressed. Are there, are there any other questions or comments? So, what, what are Mr. Clark's next steps?
I believe it's up to the board whether you want to continue and have him.
Look, I think we said that we wanted to continue for the variance.
Yeah, his next step would be go to the zoning board nineteenth of? So we are.
Or, or loosen eighty-four square feet.
Yeah, I understand now that.
Well, forty, well, forty-two per, but eighty-four.
Apple now has, Apple now has forty-two foot portals to other dimensions, which, which under the, under the senior housing don't count towards.
I'm ready for a portal to another dimension.
I'm, I'm definitely there.
So, just for my information, so Ray, if you were to lose eighty-four square feet of living space in that new building.
Yeah.
You could do it by, as Eric was saying, I think, make more common space or something like that. But you're saying.
Say again, by designating it as common space?
Yeah. Yeah. And then you were thinking that that would really change all the plans a lot.
Well, the.
But maybe not. I mean, or make the stairwells bigger or something, I don't know.
Could you have a, a shared mechanical room or something like that?
Well, there is one in, in the garage and that's not included.
But I, I think the question is, is, is it, is it.
It all feasible?
Yeah, is it practically feasible and okay to lose what is, what's, what's the total?
Forty-two.
Eighty-two per unit.
Forty-two.
Forty-two per unit, so that's six by seven in each unit.
Yeah.
On each floor, yeah.
And just, and move that into a common space.
But it just, it affects, right, but the floor, changing the floor plan is not always that simple.
It may not be that simple.
My elevator and the stairway won't change. So, you know, you're taking.
Yeah, I understand, I was just bringing it up.
I think, yeah, no, it's, if it's feasible, it can save you going to the.
Yeah, but zoning board isn't the worst thing.
No, no, I don't anticipate any problem.
But to get a variance is not easy. And he has to prove hardship.
Yeah.
I mean, special exception is not set, but variance.
Yeah, I mean, variance is a, is a very high standard, so, I mean, you, you can do.
They don't, they don't feel that they have any dimensional controls over the senior housing statute ordinance.
Well, then, ZBA.
It's written in the zoning.
Yeah, it's, it's. We're going to change that.
They don't have.
Because they're, they're going to get learned.
How about, how about when?
Probably next, next, just before you attend, but.
Seriously.
You know, they.
Because they complained about it, right?
They did complain, but they also hadn't read it. And so, you know, that, that, there's.
This is telling.
Well, well, be, be, look, be that as, as it may. If you, if you go to them and you, the variance issue is out of this board's hands. If you get the variance, so be it. If not, then you'll, you'll have to figure something out.
Meaning it's when?
What's that?
What's that meaning is when?
Nineteenth is the next zoning board meeting of next month.
Ray hasn't applied yet.
Yeah, Ray hasn't applied yet, but that's the next. But there is still time to get on the agenda.
And, and there's two strategies.
You'd be third on the agenda.
One, one would be shrinking the units. The other would be to add the other, the other units back into your plan and have them average out to twelve hundred, which would still work. But that requires.
Six and seven.
Six and seven, right.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, it sounds like Ray's not ready for that.
Well, I, I'm just stating the, the two logical strategies.
But what if he said that, that when he did the six and seven.
Yeah, thank you for that actually, dude. Worth considering, it's almost the same amount of effort, so. So would that have to go back through the ZBA?
No.
No.
Because it was actually part of it.
Right, you've already done that.
But it would come back to us with a bunch of the same questions we had last time. If you've got answers for most of those, then, then that the answer.
Answers for all of them, right.
Yeah, all of them.
That might, that might be easier.
Not doing very well with answers on the ZBA.
Well, actually, you've, you've done very well with the answers.
Yeah, so, so where are you sitting, John?
It, it matters. So to David's point, you could put that in the mix and weigh your different hardships and which, which path would be the easiest for you. But you do have several options in terms of that square footage. Three, I guess, or.
Yeah. It wouldn't have, it wouldn't have cropped up as an issue if you hadn't decided to drop those other two units.
Right. So. Yeah, well, I thought it was the simplest plan. And Jim Kennedy, Jim Kennedy suggested doing just that to changing the, you know, change the design and, you know, I didn't, that's a whole complex set of equations in itself, so.
But, but Ray wouldn't have to do specific detailed design for the six and seven. You could just say that they're going to be a certain size. You wish we'd bring it down below the.
I don't know, I don't know whether that's, I mean, we had a lot of questions associated with.
He, he's got to be, before he proposes, he's got to be convinced that it's got a workable floor plan and it's constructed.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of.
Those are the two big things from your standpoint.
Yeah.
And if you get all the way through and then you say, well, I got approval for nine hundred and sixty square feet, but it just isn't going to give us a livable space, then you don't want that.
Pretty challenging, right?
Right. So Ray, I'm going to say that this is, this is a laudable plan. I really appreciate you trying to do this. I'm, I'm sorry that the ordinance is so difficult to me.
Thank you, Rich, that means a lot coming from you and I appreciate it. And I know you've had your struggles with it too, so. Well, I think we're done.
Okay. I wanted to give this to you, maybe you could reuse it in, in case you go see your friends at the zoning board.
Oh, yeah.
It's a beautiful.
I actually provide the zoning board with one of those every single time for every single case.
So, you should know, the last two hearings here have cost me over five hundred dollars in paper. So.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
You know, they're nice prints. They're frameable. And that doesn't even count for preliminary ones last year. For ZBA, this is just the last two planning board hearings.
Well, is there, is there, I mean, everybody has to, has to do it. Is there any way to make that?
Considered digital prints have one set of large scale and the rest is digital.
Or screen, you're.
Have a screen.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, well, honestly, I, I, I don't know. I have a laptop which is small and it's really hard to actually review the digital. I mean, I, I can do it certainly and I didn't get these till after. So what I did review, I did give to you, but it's, it's not as, as, yeah, it's not as nice. I, I would say I don't need the extra big one. This, this reduced sized one is perfectly wonderful and I don't know if we really need the color.
Well, I got you a David request.
Yeah, I've been, or the board wants, so.
I think there, there could be other ways of dealing with it, this isn't.
Can I ask how much the, the large copies cost each? The reason I'm asking is, I have a plotter here that, it seems to me that it certainly is not going to cost me, or the town, as much.
So those are twenty, twenty-six?
A piece?
Yeah. No, excuse me, twenty, let's see, sorry, twenty-four.
Yep, so it's right. Twenty-four a piece?
Yeah.
I can.
You guys should just buy the equipment.
I can beat that.
Do it for everybody that may want.
Well, no, the, the reason I'm asking is because that, that is very expensive and I do have a plotter here that I use and I, I use it quite a bit and I thank the select board for, this select board for supporting me and getting it. It's an inkjet plotter that the, the print heads and the ink cartridge will dry out if not used. So, you, you might as well.
You know, you could, you could wrap it into the, either the building permit or the application fee.
Yeah, well, I could, absolutely.
And I imagine that pretty quickly you'd be demanding less large colored prints.
Well, it's easier to, oh, I mean, I can just go and it, it'll, it prints them out. It prints them out, so. I mean, even these, it has a scanner, I can take these, scan them in. And if I even give them one large copy, I can make multiple copies right off the, the, it's just like a photocopier.
Are we going to continue this to?
Yes, that's the next.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Okay. I need to make a motion?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to continue this, this thing.
To August.
To, to August.
August twenty-sixth after the zoning meeting or?
Well, we have, we're going to be scheduling the, oh, well, yeah, okay. After the zoning meeting is when?
Zoning is nineteenth, so the week after is the twenty-sixth.
Okay. Continue to the twenty-sixth, is there a second? Vicki seconds. All those in favor who are, who are voting members, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed are very quiet people, so.
You said seven, rate at seven P M.
At seven P M.
At seven P M first thing.
Here.
Here, in person.
Yay.
So, butters will not get another notice? You need to like put that on your calendar now?
It's in the calendar.
Yeah, okay.
We didn't get notes for this one.
They should not, because it's a continuation.
Continuation, yeah.
So if Ray decides not to go to the ZBA, there's no way we can do it. There's no time to do it sooner, right?
No.
Well, we, no, we can't do it sooner.
Because you've continued it to the.
The continuation will continue, all right, until morale improves.
Yeah, I'll hold them up afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Tina.
Well, I'm not sure if it was.
It went much, it went much, it went much better with you here.
You need to understand what Ray's coming home with and so now you understand why, how.
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
Bye-bye.
Just to ask you, Ben, in the closet there is a overhead projector. I don't know whose it is. Do you know anything about it?
I know that somebody that's in the building uses it.
I remember Jack Elliott used it for the master.
Yeah, yeah. He torpedoed the master plan with it.
Well, I want to get, put it in the ceiling up here.
Yeah.
You, you don't mean overhead projector?
Or not overhead, yeah, right.
Smart board.
Computer projector, yeah. Yeah, so that we can project stuff up on the board.
I mean, I, I think, I think we should minimize, you know, unnecessary expenditure.
Well, the thing is, it didn't matter. I mean, he gave this to us the night of the meeting. I mean, it's like B F D, we're, you know, we can't review it the night of the meeting.
Well, that's, that's.
So why did he even do it?
It's not his fault.
What do you mean it's not his fault? It's, he, he's the one who.
Well, but regardless of whether, you know, that's a different issue.
I do ask for the large copies so that we can put them around and look at it.
So, I think, I think it would be worthwhile to figure out exactly what we need. I mean, I'll say that I also look at, you know, when I get these digitally, I'm looking, they're small.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
So, I mean, I, this, this size is fine, I mean, this is great.
As long as you can read it, if I can read that, yeah.
But, but is there any reason why we need both of these?
I had said the large ones and then the smaller ones that he gave me and then he brought the, the extra ones, so those were not the mid-sized ones. Were not part of what I asked for.
Okay.
So these are like eighteen by twenty, this is an eighteen by twenty-four?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I think, you know, we had eighteen by twenty-fours, that'd be adequate. And if you had questions on, on detail, you could blow it up on your computer screen.
And frankly, if we all lay out the big ones on tables, they don't even fit, so.
Well, whatever the board wants, it's not, my decision is yours.
David, could you put on, on the agenda for as we go forward David, could you put on, on the agenda for as we go forward and get five minutes to do anything else? We, we wanna review the, the submittal requirements in terms of the paper.
And, you know, the, you have official copies of things, and when the, somebody comes for a site plan review, there is a size, you know, right there on the checklist.
Yeah.
That tells what size you want.
Right, so that's.
Five, though, that's.
Right, that's going to be recorded.
Where does toss this stuff?
Yeah, it's just drafts.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I also think the color, you know, unless there's something that really.
Yeah, you don't need the color.
And that's definitely one of the reasons.
Again, it, it's a selling point, to me.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true. First of all, on some of these, on some of these that are complicated, if this, if these littler ones were all black and white, I'd go across that particular.
It's, it's a lot harder to read.
Sort out what's what.
In this case, I think the color helps.
Okay, red line setbacks.
Okay, folks, and if I, if it's okay, I'd like to go on to the next item. So, I think we have a continuation for David Robey. David, what have you heard?
I had an email from David, he had said that he's passed out a memo at the last meeting. I wasn't here, so I didn't get that, so I, I don't have a copy of it.
Yeah, I read that memo.
Yep, and he would like you to review that and consider approving the, his request.
I thought that, I thought that we had, we, we, we did review it, but we didn't review it.
I don't know what, I wasn't there, but.
I think, I think my last words about it were, it was a workaround, and then our applicant lost him.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I, I was not in favor of it, but.
I also didn't think it.
I always had phones, I never saw it.
I think I have.
I think I gave mine to somebody.
I have a copy.
I don't have one either.
And David, you, you can.
If you have a copy of it, John, I would love to, let me just go take, make photo copies.
Let me make sure I actually do have a copy.
I haven't read one.
Several copies.
I might just bring them.
What?
The workaround, this dump box, the property.
Oh, well, it's not zoning compliant, so.
Sometimes things should get done that are right, rather than.
Well.
Okay, yes, here it is.
Okay, I will go make photo copies.
He could do a lot, he could do a lot of averaging, and he can do a conservation lot. Those are two ways he can do it.
Well, lot, lot size, lot size averaging, he can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the problem with conservation lot is that I don't think anybody would take easement.
Yeah, nobody's gonna take an easement on that lot.
On that lot, so that's kind of.
And that's a requirement for a conservation lot, but lot size averaging is, is, seems pretty.
drawback on lot size averaging, that's a choice.
What's the drawback?
I don't know.
Uh, I don't think there's any difference between him get it, doing the approach he had. In both of those cases, he's gonna need to put in, show where a driveway would go. That's basically it.
Yeah, we have to be built, you have to show our town, too.
So, in, in, in either event, he'd have to show that.
Who owns the true scrap road dump?
Who owns it?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
That revert to the town, is that part of it?
Well, people just used to throw stuff, you know, over to the side, on the south side of the.
Of the ravine?
Yeah, under the ravine.
And the issue I have, I remember when the Bailey dump opened, you know, they got paid to maintain the dump. I don't think they ever foresaw, you know, in the future, they were gonna get penalized for picking that. You know, my, my feeling is that Lime at some point in time is gonna own its garbage, regardless.
You mean past garbage or future?
Yeah, past garbage. I mean, I remember the, when it went over across the river, there were big hikes and charges.
Oh, the Barker Sergeant, yeah.
And, you know, it just, it's beyond me, I, you know, I, I don't think we can escape our garbage, let's put it that way. That's just my own opinion, I think in the future, we own the damn stuff, in one form or another.
Yeah, as opposed to a private, as opposed to the private person that just owns the land.
Yeah, he, I mean, Bailey just owned the land, and they said, hey, we got a place you can put the garbage. I mean, it wasn't like they were getting a huge amount of money to, to cover up the.
Right, but usually now that the town.
The original.
Take that land over. In other words, they should take it over and, and be responsible for it.
I think it should be set up so the town would end up owning it.
Right, so the landlord does not have the responsibility.
Well, that's a different issue than what we're being presented with.
Right.
Well, we should find a way to make all this work.
Well, you're, you're the selectman.
I know, that, that's my opinion.
Because the, the planning board doesn't have the power to do that.
Well, the, the town could take that land by own it domain.
That's an option, that's maybe to bring it up on the select board dot.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think the Baileys would mind. I don't think the Baileys would mind, I don't think they'd own it domain. They certainly didn't want it, so.
Well, it's.
Did everybody get one?
Your ability to sell their property.
These people can follow instructions.
Okay, well, those are the smart, that's the smart side of the table.
Well, and the, the challenge with any kind of thing with garbage items is that someday it becomes a ten million dollar liability.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I think they intended to take on the liability.
Way more, way more than me.
Depending what's there, though, right?
Yeah, but.
Well, anyway.
I worked for an engineering firm, and we made our money trying to clean up these problems.
Folks, let, let's get back to the main issue here, which.
I mean, it's a monthly amount.
Could you read this, and then we can, we can, it's already eight thirty-five, eight thirty-seven, or so, let's move it along.
Are people done?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, what are, what are your thoughts?
So, David's saying we, we designate the second lot as a non-buildable lot, and he's saying it's a non-buildable lot. Who designates?
What do you mean, who designates?
Well, I mean, who, who says that it is a non-buildable lot?
Well, I, I don't know what his specific thinking is there, but I could assume that he'd be saying that he would agree that it was a non-buildable lot under the definition, and we would designate it. You know, he's saying we can approve it because he's designating it as a non-buildable lot.
And then it would, and that would be whatever registered in Louisville, and, and that would, so it wouldn't ever be built up.
Yes, people would come back here and get that condition of approval taken off, absolutely could.
So, it could be built up in, in some ways.
In the future, yes.
But, I mean, the, you know.
It's non-conforming, except that it's non-conforming.
We're creating a non-conforming lot, I mean, by doing that, so, yeah, I mean, yeah, so it's a legal non-conforming lot, 'cause it's been through this planning board, supposedly, you know.
Did you get, you read the attorney's letter?
Yes.
Yeah. So, she, she was unusually explicit and strong in her guidance, um, that we should, we should not approve this under these conditions. And, you know, I, I think even, I don't, I don't, like, what Tim said, I don't think that he can get a conservation easement on, on that as a conserva, oh, he wasn't gonna make it. Yeah, I, and, and, no, I'm sorry, Tim, not what you said, what Vicky said. I don't think we can do it as a conservation lot, because I don't think you can get any, any.
Yeah, nobody would take it.
Nobody would take that on. But I do believe, as far as I can tell, that like, well, the definition of lot size averaging, the ability to create lots which may not meet the minimum lot size or dimensional criteria of Table 5-1, and one of those criteria is the road frontage, which is the single issue, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so if we can, uh, lot size average to provide relief for the subdivision, the only thing on a, on a, on a quick review I did, um, that would be required is the same thing that would be required on the conservation lot, which would be a driveway. Driveway design. The parent lot has over six hundred feet of road frontage, it's best Nick could determine, David and I. Yeah, so I, I don't see what the problem is. I mean, he, he, he's meeting, he's meeting the criteria, as far, you know, from my point of view, it's consistent with the most appropriate, he's the land to allow the land use patterns which preserve agricultural soils, preserve the natural and scenic qualities of open land in town for conservation and recreation. I think, uh, you know, we can put conditions on it. You know, certainly we'd need the driveway.
The road frontage issue, because of the, the new lot has no road frontage. In the past, the board has approved lots with no road frontage by having an easement placed on the, the proper amount of road frontage on the parent lot. So, you would take and say, this, it needs three hundred feet of road frontage, so you would take three hundred feet from the parent lot, place an easement on it, saying that is dedicated to that back lot.
So, the easement would be to, to benefit the owner of the back lot?
Correct.
He didn't have to do anything.
For a driveway? Sorry.
It, it just, well, it basically says, this, it, not in as much as it benefits the owner of the back lot, it says the owner of the front lot cannot use that three hundred feet for any purposes on their lot. So, you can't, if you're gonna do a subdivision, and you said, great, I'm gonna put in, you know, I, I have six hundred feet of road frontage, I'm gonna do a two-lot subdivision, no, you no longer have six hundred feet, even though physically you do, three hundred has been dedicated to that.
So, it's just signing this to the other lot.
It's taking away from the, the parent lot owner, but indirect benefit to the secondary.
And this has been done by the board in the past. The Nichols lot up at the end of Dorchester Road has that on it.
Right. So, is it just the three hundred feet on the road, or is there some depth?
Nope, it's just three hundred feet, easement saying you can't use the, the three hundred feet of the road. What I would do is I pull the, the easement for the Nichols lot, and have them.
I think there was also one, a wing lot up on Franklin Hill, it was done the same way.
It may have been.
With the reduced frontage.
One question, so the plan, David's plan is, is to put a conservation easement on this, on the, on the parent lot?
Yes.
So, should we make that a condition?
No.
No?
You wouldn't accept that, because then it's devalued. So, then the, if we put that as a condition, then there's no value to the easement.
Because it's already.
Because it's already been conserved, and so the Baileys lose the development value in terms of getting reimbursed for the reasonable.
I see, okay.
Yeah, so we can't do that.
It's not a simple driveway, it's a, it's a penalty for over what Dave proposed.
Well, then we, there's a, I mean, we have a section here that says road frontage, five twelve. Such a, you know, for road frontage, such lots may have no road frontage, but must have adequate access as approved by the planning board. So, we have to have something, and.
Couldn't you have access without taking three hundred feet of frontage?
No, that's, that's, that's a different thing. The, that lot averaging thing is different than the, the access thing.
The zoning ordinance itself, ordinance itself requires three hundred feet of road frontage, and the, the planning board can't, has no jurisdiction to waive that, three hundred feet.
So, can't, I mean, he could go to the, the zoning board, I guess, right, if he wanted to, to get that, both of those. No driveway, no, 'cause these are zoning provisions.
Right, but on what basis?
I don't know what basis, but.
There's not a hardship.
We don't, we don't have the, I mean, you know, that's his argument in front of the zoning board, it's not ours to have to worry about, but.
Okay, well, he can do that.
Yeah, he could. But I'm happy to approve it as a lot averaged, showing that there's a driveway and, and encumbering three hundred feet of frontage, so it can't be used for development of the bigger lot, just 'cause that's what the zoning allows, I'm happy to do that.
If we do that, Ricky, then, and David did decide to go to the ZBA, could he undo that, or once we do it, it's, it's there?
No, you would have to.
He would do that first.
You would have to do that first.
Yeah, okay, so we can't, that's, yeah, that's what I mean.
So, did he want us, he didn't want us to make a decision unless we agreed with this, right? So, we need to just talk about what we would want, so to give him a kind of straw poll or whatever, so he knows how he can proceed.
So, we would, we would say we agree with your approach, and that's what we would approve, unless you come back from the zoning board with another waiver.
Your approach being what?
Right, the lot size averaging.
The lot size averaging.
Yeah, lot size averaging, yeah.
And then, then he has a choice of accepting our, accepting our proposal, or going and getting a different deal.
Right.
So, it's a lot averaging, but also that five twelve with the driveway?
Yeah, a condition would be approval of a, of a accessway or driveway. Well, no, in, in terms of lot size averaging, it's a driveway plan, right? Isn't it, David?
I don't think it requires a plan, this has to have that right.
Let's, let's look.
Adequate access as approved by the planning board is.
What are you looking at?
Five twelve, page thirty-nine.
Does anybody have a copy of his actual site plan?
I do, I do.
Access?
It's pretty flat, you know, it's a flat lot, so.
It's water-sucking, it'll bust the water.
Right, well, so this is the plan, which is also, the, the full permit or survey has not been submitted, all we have is this that's been submitted.
Right, but, so the frontage would come from where?
Here to here, 'cause there's somebody else who owns this, so it's only here and here.
Right, which is roughly how many feet?
I don't know, there's five hundred, so it's, it's almost like a thousand, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if somebody's trying to have a tax write-off for this, you know, for the easement on, on the big lot, if you, if we take three hundred feet away, then that would mean that they probably would take away one a lot, so that would have a value on the tax write-off, so I don't know how that'll.
Well, I mean, one thing he could do is he could say, I'm gonna carve out this, and then have a right-of-way easement in from here, and have that be his frontage. That's another option, and that way it's one lot, it's more land than he wants. I mean, it would, the other way would, would be to do it like this, but then that lot would be a separate lot from that, so he'd end up being subdividing into the three lots.
Well, this, this, this is a frontage here, so it'd have to be three hundred, three hundred, three hundred, so it'd have to just divide it up equally, yep.
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out the logic of how he could do it, 'cause that seems like the only way. But if he's trying to figure out how to not.
But we, you know, but we just have to say there's access to this lot anywhere in there, right? Then it, it shows that there could be.
But that's, the three hundred feet is a precedent, but we don't have to do that?
What, I didn't follow, what? We don't have to require the three hundred feet?
It's outside?
We have to have road frontage, and the frontage has to be three hundred feet, so, so, and we cannot create a lot that doesn't have frontage.
Have the road frontage.
Well, where in, where in lot size everything is the say we need to require?
Um, the maximum, here we go. A five, a five-eleven D-two shall not exceed the maximum number of lots which could be created in the subdivision, meeting the lot size, road frontage, and depth ratio requirements. So, it has to meet the road frontage.
Right, but we're saying a requirement, that David gave the example of Nichols subdivision, I have it in my knowledge, where three hundred foot of road frontage was set aside for a lot that didn't have it.
Right.
But that's not requirement. But that's not requirement of the lot size averaging, that's discretion, right?
No, that, that is.
Well, that, I think, what David said is that, that was a precedent, how some board decided something at one point.
Under table five one, in the rural district, the minimum road frontage is three hundred.
I understand.
So that's for a lot, the minimum is three hundred.
But again, we're only going back to this precedent, right?
Right, but the precedent was allowing you to use, when you're subdividing a lot, using the road frontage on the parent lot to make up the road frontage on the subdivided lot.
Yes.
So, I mean.
It just doesn't say we have to do that.
Yeah, so to Eric's point, it may, it may shock everybody, but planning boards have made a lot of decisions over the years that, you know, might not always be agreed to by future planning boards, so I, you know, we're, we're not necessarily constrained, but consistency is, I know it's, there's a saying, a negative saying about it, but it's also pretty important.
Well, so how else do you ensure that D two, if we didn't restrict the frontage, is, I guess, the question? How else could we do that?
Ensure access to the lot?
No, 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 ensure that the maximum number of lots wouldn't exceed what was, you know, allowed now, if you didn't do that. I mean, I, I'm just, you know.
Well, right, I mean, and that, and that gets back to why I was saying, you know, should we have a condition? Because what we're doing is making this lot more valuable, we're, we're taking, we're taking the dump out.
Yeah.
There, there's no restrictions on it.
Now, and the question also, D three, may give you the, the ability to just say, no road frontage, and we're not going to.
What, and we're not going to what?
Not to, to require an easement for, or use of the, the parent lot.
D three?
Under lot size averaging, page thirty-seven.
Yeah, where in, in D three does it?
Oh, lot sizes, frontage, and setbacks shall be determined by the planning board based on the character of the land and the neighborhood's adequacy of the soils to support onsite waste water or road setbacks may be reduced, can't be gone for worry about that. When frontage requirements are reduced, the planning board may require shared driveways, if you reduce the, the frontage requirement to zero.
On what basis are, I mean, this all has to be done because it's fulfilling the, the purpose of the, the objectives of lot size averaging, so.
So you're saying D two applies?
Let me throw another weird wrinkle, I don't know if this applies at all, but I know that in, in Maine, when I subdivided land, they defined frontage just as the dimension of the lot that was parallel to the road, so it could be back, but it was really, for them, it was more to do with trying to not create flag lots and weird shaped lots and everything like that, so.
Taking care of by the four to one ratio, that would, you know, basically keep you from creating the flag lots.
But, but in ours, the three hundred, with the road here, the three hundred dimension this way would have, would have covered as long as I had an easement access to it, but I had to have those two things. So now, I'm just saying, that was, that was my town in Maine, it had nothing to do with here.
Right, well, we could change our, change our rules, I mean, that's kind of an interesting approach, to have that much.
It allowed you to have back lots, but they had to have certain dimensions, and they had to have, and they had to have access. And what they, the reason they wanted it like that is because they, they wanted to make sure that, well, you know, it was, it was a lot shape thing, but it also, in some cases, was a emergency.
Right, well, no, that, that's an interesting way of doing it.
But that's, but that's not something we can.
We can't do that now.
So, but let's get back to this, this precedent, is that something that, that is taken from the ordinance, or is it, was that just a?
That is a way that one planning board at a certain point in time.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, it wasn't based, we're doing this because it says here.
No, it was a solution that the planning board had for creating a back lot that did not have road frontage.
It's a whole, whole thing of zoning easements, I mean, we used to have the notebook in the town offices of zoning easements, because it's been done more than once.
Yeah. Are there substantive differences between that case and this case?
Other than the landfill?
I think there's.
Well, is the back lot in the other case?
The back lot, I think the reason for that.
Qualitatively different from the back lot in this case?
Yes, because I think the, the intent of the back lot in that case was to ensure that it was developable, okay?
So there's actually more reason why we should make an exception here, because they're actually trying to carve a lot out, so that, because it's a.
Not, they, they want it not.
Because he wants it to be not developable, and because it's a liability.
So that, right.
Not just to him, but to the whole damn town.
It just seems to me, you, table five one says three hundred feet, you go to five twelve, and it says the road frontage shall be shown in table five one, except in the case of lots approved in plan development, lot size averaging, so, okay, so lot size averaging means you can change that.
Frontage.
Frontage.
It says, subject to approval by the planning board, in discretion, some slots may have no road frontage, but must have adequate access as approved by the planning board.
And so it's just a matter of what.
Adequate access.
You gotta give them access.
What is adequate access?
The driveway.
Yeah, and he.
So, so it would need a driveway plan, is all.
It needs to be a driveway plan.
Yeah, that's what we said.
Well, would they, you require a right-of-way?
Yeah.
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
Right, so then you get into, okay, so, you know, it would make sense if they were shared, because presumably there's already one access to, on this road, and that you wouldn't have to then get a separate driveway permit from the state for that to be adequate access. So if they shared whatever the intersection is, and I don't know what that means, I mean, it seems like there's a high point here.
Yeah, but see, the, the entrance now is here.
Right, so the, so the driveway access goes like that.
That's what the original wrote to the dump board.
Right.
I believe that's David's original plan that he had submitted and never went through with, had that driveway on it. I'd have to go dig that up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm fairly certain that that was originally, I think, I think he wanted to do it as a conservation lot, and then realized that nobody would want to take it on as a conservation. And then there was also a condition that he get DES approval because of the size of the lot, because the time was much smaller.
So if he did that, if he had, if he had a right-of-way in, in here like this, would this lot here be developable?
No, it's not a separate lot, it's all part of this, it's a right-of-way, it just is a, it's a right to pass over, I, I wonder.
He'd have to subdivide, if he wanted, he'd have to further subdivide to, to do that.
Right, right, and what is the shading in the legend, because it does show this backland as something different, like there's two lots. You see that tax map insert, inset, so, and there's no legend to tell me.
I gotta go grab my, I grabbed the wrong folder.
Take a look at this. I mean, right, well, there's, he shows two, like, see in that inset, what's that about, is that a former plan?
No, these are two separate, he's showing two separate lots, because you have four oh five forty and four oh five forty-two point one. So these are two separate lots, probably in.
Well, isn't, isn't this the one that he's trying to create right there?
Yeah.
And so this is, it looks like he's trying to show a separate one there, which.
Well, I was saying it isn't.
That should be removed.
That would mean, if this was here, if this was here like that, that would just mean this is a separate something.
Right.
And that's what I was saying, is if he subdivided that out, that's still buildable, you can just come in that road and just say, this is separate and this is not.
Well, anyway, that, that needs to be clarified, because I don't know why he's showing both of those as being kind of in play here.
I'm just seeing if it tells me who that. Well, that's four oh five, four gets off of it, so this is something other, this is something else.
Oh, yeah.
This is pointing to that, so.
So this really odd shaped lot, that is.
That is, yeah, yeah, right.
The question is, what, what is, why is he carving that out as something else?
Yeah.
Right, so, so, and while, while you're here, there's a note, reference to one A, there is no note one A.
Yep.
So that should, I don't know, it's probably telling us what kind of north that is, but it didn't tell us. Right, because it's there with the north arrow, there is no one A.
And reference, one A.
Yeah, but what does that have to do with the north arrow? I mean, is that where they took the north arrow from, this plan one A?
I actually think they mean the, the boundary.
Well, I, yeah, I don't know what that means, so if you just get that clarified, yeah.
So, I think there's, there's a little omission in the lot size averaging definition. I mean, not, not the definition, but in the body of the language, it's clear we can, we can modify the dimensional controls.
Yep.
But in terms of why, which is in, in D one, it only addresses reduced lot sizes, and it really should say, the planning board may approve reduced lot sizes or allowances and dimensional controls in accordance with the objectives of the master plan. But regardless, I would say that these guidances are the, are the guidances that we should follow, which is to promote the most appropriate use of land to facilitate economical and efficient provision of the public, of public services to allow land use patterns which preserve agricultural soils, outstanding natural topographic and geologic features, and to preserve the natural and scenic qualities of the open land in the town for conservation and recreation. I mean, there are, those are clearly, you know, to me, anyway, that's clearly the intent.
Well, we don't have an application for lot size averaging in front of us, so.
But that's something we need to, we're talking about how we would deal with lot size averaging. Because this, this is a lot, we're saying lot size averaging is the way to go. We have the right, but the criteria here addresses just reduced lot sizes.
But five twelve is, is clear.
Right.
So five twelves.
So it has to be lot averaged in order for us to be able to reduce the road frontage.
Well, that would be lot average, because we're taking two, well, is it, yeah, yeah, we're, because one is smaller, that's, we're doing, we're not making a smaller, we're not reducing, but we're, we're, you know, I, I mean, literally, on a literally interpreted level, we're averaging two lots, but it's it's because of the, the definition that we're authorized to do it. The definition specifically addresses dimensional controls in five one, and that includes road frontage. So we're authorized from that, through lot size averaging in that five twelve to do it.
Right.
The criteria to.
To create a.
To, well, to have discretion.
Right.
The criteria is addressed in, in, only for reduced lots.
Right.
And that's really something I think we should, we should correct, because it should say, it should be consistent with the definition, which also includes dimensional controls, so I think that, that's a zoning amendment we should, we should have. Could, could you just jot that down?
Say that again, just.
So a five, a five eleven D, we should add language to the planning board may approve reduced lot sizes or modify.
In, in D one?
Yeah, D one. It's, the existing language says the planning board may approve reduced lot sizes, and I think we should add something like, or modifications of dimensional controls as specified in the definition of lot size averaging.
Fuck, I mean, five eleven, all of five eleven is only pertains to lot size, am I correct?
What's the whole point of five eleven?
Five, five eleven is lot size.
Yeah, but this is five eleven D one.
Yeah, but why would we talk about other dimensional controls in five eleven D one?
Because it says on, especially D three, lot sizes, frontage, and setbacks can be determined.
Well, maybe, maybe those shouldn't do that.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, that's an option.
But I mean, this is the whole place where they collect, where they collect all the rules about lot size averaging.
All, all the objectives as well.
Well, it's, yeah, I think the title on five oh one, lot size should be changed. It's like dimensional considerations or something like that, because we talk about building lot depth, which is not lot size.
Okay, so why, why don't we say?
Lot size and dimension.
Why don't we say?
Why don't we say you will look at five eleven?
Five eleven, especially.
The title.
Especially lot size averaging.
And the title.
And the titles. And the body.
And while you're at it, looking at section four oh five of the subdivision regulations on page twenty-three, you have a reference in A to.
Hold on, what page is this?
Third, twenty-three, I was going back to David's letter.
Okay.
And it says, section one oh, one point oh four reserves the planning board's right to waive the requirements in these regulations, which push you over to four oh five. And four oh five A, the, the second to last, the last word in the, second to last sentence, especially section one point oh three of the line zoning ordinance.
Purposes, isn't it?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't say of, though, it says, especially section one point oh three, which refers to one point oh three of the subdivision regulations.
Okay, thank you, that, never mind, that's.
Oh, so what is one oh three in this one?
There is no one oh three, that was what my, I was.
No, no, I mean, in, in these regulations, one of them, one oh three is the purposes. Protecting the preserve, protecting and preserving the rural character of the town, protecting neighboring and neighborhood land uses, preserving land values and avoiding increased real estate tax burdens, promoting and protecting the amenities of the town, preventing such scattered or premature subdivisions, assuring the adequate provision of safe and convenient traffic, providing uniform standards and procedures for observance by both the subdivider and the planning board. Yeah, so this is where it gets, G is, gets a little sticky. For observance by the, by both the subdivider and the planning board, thus encouraging the equitable handling of all subdivision plans.
Personally, I don't think that what he's trying to do here is inconsistent with any of those purposes, I just think it's a weird case, that he's back in the back.
So is.
I don't think he's asking for anything unreasonable, we're just trying to find a, a way to do it.
Yeah, no, I, I totally, I, I like conserve land, and, you know, I'm sorry about the landfill.
All right, so, so in terms of, of a sense of the board, is there anybody on the board that has a problem with approaching it the way that it seems to be going?
Lot size averaging.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I just point out, you're in a butter, Tim?
Right.
So you really shouldn't be voting on this.
Well, that's true, that's true.
Yeah, so there should be an alternate appointed.
Okay. All right, so alternates show up.
Well, they're here now.
But we're not voting.
I understand, but he shouldn't be on the board, he should have, like, recused himself, and then, and then somebody should.
I agree.
Yeah, you're in a butter, right here.
Just a little tiny piece of.
No, but you're in a butter, no, you're in a butter.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
But I'm, I'd be, I'd support either the averaging or the carving out some, some piece somehow of the existing frontage, assigning it to this lot, and making sure there's a right-of-way that gets them in there.
But that would, wouldn't that be through lot size averaging? I don't think there.
I think David's whole purpose is so that when he goes to, you know, carves out that dump, because nobody wants it, his, if he puts an easement on the property, the, whatever he's being paid for that easement. his, if he puts an easement on the property, the, whatever he's being paid for that easement is going to be based on the highest value of the property. And if you carve out 300 feet of road frontage...
It's lesser.
You're dropping his number.
Yeah, I like it, as I was saying a little while ago.
But you still have to have access to that. Somebody still needs to have access to this.
There's no way around us providing access.
I'm more interested in access than I am road frontage. How much road frontage he has makes less sense to me than just being able, in case somebody's got to go in there to do remediation or something else someday.
Log all that stuff out.
It's been, it could become valuable someday, you know, I mean, he resources it very right there, you know. Or they may have to install a pump and treat system or something too, because you never know what you're gonna need.
I don't think there's any doubt that we need access to that.
Don't say that. Value at some point in time when you can split it all up again.
Can you also make a note in the notes on the right-hand side? It says, "The boundary information shown hereon may be inconsistent with the boundary information on record." And I think that what we want to say is lot two, boundary information, because it's the big lot that hasn't been surveyed, so lot two, because otherwise this is, should be fine.
All we really have to say is, you know, it's our intent to figure out how to solve the issue before us.
Well, we've been, we've told him that, we were trying to work with him last time.
There were some unexpected events that...
And, yeah, I mean, nobody's against this, everybody wants the land conserved.
I mean, is there anybody against doing this? Okay.
It sounds like we're looking for some guidance that we can give David to come back to us and say, and have some assurance that we would say, yes.
Yeah.
I guess, and the safest thing, I think, seems to be the lot size averaging.
Right.
I think that the pinning down exactly how we're gonna get everybody on the board to vote may take some discussion, you know, about what's required for the access way, but...
Well, you can ride your bike or drive out, it's very flat, so there's no grade problems. And I would be very happy with the existing shared access here, otherwise I do feel like we would need, if this access that he's giving to the lot five goes out here, then I think there needs to be a DOT approval given for that point, to have that be a driveway intersection, otherwise it's really pretty bony.
The best access is where it is.
Yeah, so that it'd be shared access.
It's going along a hedgerow and then cuts across.
Right, so, so that's probably something we can...
Yeah, and point him to, just go, that's the easiest, you don't need additional DOT permit for that.
So, everybody, and I'm including alternates, because one or both of you could be, we're giving, David has asked us for a reply to his, for input, I guess. So, in our, in giving him this feedback through David, is everybody okay with that? And as usual, I'll take silence as assent.
So we're gonna, all right, just to be clear, we're gonna say that...
Just what Vicky and Ben were saying.
Yeah, not take 300 feet.
No, we want to approve it with no, with no frontage, with guaranteed access. And then the question is, does there need to be encumbrance of the 300 feet of...
Well, that's something we can work, but I thought what we were saying is that we weren't gonna encumber it with 300. Or are we gonna figure that out?
We don't have that question before us yet, I mean...
I think that we might want to think about that before we get the poor man back here.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is whatever we...
We shouldn't bait him along, if it's not gonna work in that way, then we should be able to tell him that.
I would say these are unusual circumstances, given what's happened, so the more information we give him, the better. But it can't be binding, because in any case, everybody has to be able to say, well, gosh, I didn't know that.
And the other thing is...
But it's simply, it would simply be a sense of the board, but not binding, if that's okay with everybody.
And I think, oh, go ahead.
What I was gonna say, is that to sum up, our note back to David would be, no, we can't just make the subdivision as you requested.
That way.
It strikes us that a lot size averaging, where there is easement, access granted, would pass muster.
And get you what you want.
Right, and, you know, again, no promises.
Yeah, it's not, we can't, we can't make this binding, but that's the sense of the board, something along those lines.
Seems like the logical path to get the same place, just a different round event. Seems care of everyone's...
Yeah, and, you know, when, when the attorney, usually the attorney input is, you know, I believe in my senses and to the best of my knowledge, but when I see something like, you should not do this, we should, we should not ignore that.
And there is that issue of precedent, and I'm the one who brought up tossing that, not quite tossing out the precedent. If there are substantive differences between these two cases, I think there's an argument to be made that precedent...
I've thrown out the... I've thrown out the precedent just as it was a solution used by a previous planning board, I'm not saying...
I think the language in, I forget whether it was 512, but there seemed to be discretionary language depending, you know, that said depending essentially on the particular situation.
Yeah.
So that gives us some leeway. So, it's almost, it's almost tomorrow. One more thing we need, two more things we definitely need to do, can we move on? Is that okay?
Well, we should need to continue this.
Yes, okay, I'd like to make a motion with Vicky seconding it, that, that we continue this to, when are we continuing? Because we're gonna do the, the, we need to do the...
Energy hearing.
Energy hearing, well, it's the next planning board meeting.
So, what do we want to do? Do we want to put, want to give this priority and then push off the energy hearing to another?
I think we should, David was irritated the first time, because he had to sit through Ray's thing before. And remember, because, you know, we took him at like nine o'clock at night.
Let's give David, or we can come early again.
No, that's not good, I think that was our recipe for... He might have rushed his supper, and that could have caused distress, okay?
Okay, so, so what's the date, the next one?
August 12th.
August 12th, this will go first, and we have a lot of stuff we can do, because we've, you know, had so many cases in that meeting. And then, so, so the, what's the next meeting after that? That'll be the energy hearing.
That will be Ray Clark's continuing hearing, 26th.
That, we can't have both?
No, we can't, so when's the next one after that?
Uh, September 9th.
Okay. So, please notice...
This is for the public hearing.
9/9, for the master plan hearing. Okay. And we still have the minutes to do. Oh, do we have to vote on that, or is that...
Yes.
Okay.
I seconded it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
I can't vote.
No, you're, you're on to another subject.
That's right, we're on to another subject.
Okay, so that was unanimous. All right, so we have the minutes to do. Let's do the second ones first, because they're pretty easy, and I actually mean this seriously, I thought, Rich, that that was perfect.
It's absolutely.
I mean, the only, the only comment I would make is, should we just take David as a map of it?
Why?
I mean, I understand what Rich was doing.
Why should we say as an...
I think it matters, I mean, see, I mean, from the historical record, we got together and we canceled the meeting.
Yeah, now you're right, you're right.
That's another reason.
Yeah. And I just, I don't think it's a good idea to have actually mention anything about anybody's...
No, 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 it's, this is the standard operating procedure.
However, we did have the presence of heart to continue the hearing.
I recall that.
I think the board did a very excellent job of everything, you know, making sure that David was taken care of and getting him all situated and then having the mindset to go forward and...
Tim and Rich did particularly good pumping.
It was a group effort.
Well, you know, it's very well...
Would have been helpful to have somebody like, with your skills, on site.
We did okay.
Everything turned out just perfect, so...
I would say so, yeah.
All right, so, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of whatever date that is.
Some of, 8th, July 8th.
July 8th, as written by Rich, is there a second, Vicky?
I already did.
Late.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, and then the other ones. These are 624.
Right, the only thing I have is a couple of minor typos. Really minor, first page, third paragraph from the bottom, Vicky asked if the board should be approving a subdivision, units would be sold as economy. Ray felt it was premature for subdivision as, take out the.
Right.
And then the next paragraph down, the beginning of the second sentence, it should be he probably, he found, instead of the found. And then the only other one was on page three.
Rich, I think that, my intent would have been for the board.
Okay.
Okay.
The board found.
The board was inclined.
Okay. And then page three, the fourth paragraph down, David Robey, meeting via phone, described the intent of, let's put an "of" in, post.
Okay.
The only other change I would make is in that same paragraph, I would say David Robey called in via phone.
Well, what does it say now?
As opposed to a meeting via phone.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sounds good.
Agreed with that?
All right, I'd like to make a motion, seconded by Vicky, that, to approve the amended by Tim and Rich version of...
The minutes.
Whatever they're called.
August 26th.
Yeah.
24th.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, and I'd like to make a motion to end the meeting, do I have a second, Vicky? Okay, Rich, Rich, Rich got this one, Rich got this, he got the buzzer in. All those in favor, everybody?
I'm doing a Jay Smith, you know, to put that hat on, because...
Oh, instead of slamming down the briefcase.
I have like...
We just leave him here all day, I'm gonna save.
We need to keep this...
I have copies of, I have electronic copies that I can...
But are these still operative, or I'm...
He's gonna redo it.
He's gonna redo everything. All right, can we give, oh, it's late, we're adjourned meeting, never mind. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
I actually have a copy of the revised complaint.
I listened to that last two weeks ago.
Yes.
And I was on the phone, that was insane.
I bet.
What would happen?
We turned the phone off eventually.
Well, eventually, it took us a while.
Not for a long time.
Well, we were thinking about other things.
Yeah, we had other things.
You should have, did you hear, like, call 911? Was that said loudly enough?
What happened, people over?
Good night, everybody.
No, like, it should be here, now there's that sign, but no, we didn't know. So the bad news was, we had called 911, and then Cameron, you know, got the call, and he happened to be there, he hadn't been there like that minute. And the AED, I know that there's probably some technical competency, but the same box.
Oh, yeah.
So it's like, yeah. They're telling us to be calm, be calm. Where it's like, okay, fine, let's get David going, be calm.
And we are going to be having some training done, so that at least all the staff, board members, if they want, board chairs, if they want, they'll walk through how to use AEDs, so that, you know, even though it's so easy to use, having just a little familiarity, it's going to help.
Well, I got, I got really...
The machine said, it's a wonderful machine.
And, you know, I wrote a note to Eric Rich, I mean, he set the note, and that he sent a separate note to say...
And you push the button, and it tells you what to do.
Yeah, step by step.
And she kept going, and she said, just keep going, one, two, three, four, one, add.
I probably haven't seen her in a while. You're using everything.
Yeah, well, you're bad, and, you know, with a log, it was impressive. And then that kind of makes all of the...
That's why we...
Yeah, immediately, Tricky out, I'm Tricky out. I'm not a doctor, but I'd like to be.
It was like, I didn't have that, you know, always losing, you know, gentles, you know, but really, he's getting there, like, that hard.